This meeting is being held entirely using the Zoom conference platform. It's being held entirely virtual. The township building has been closed since this pandemic began for the safety of our police department and our employees that work at the administration building. So this meeting is being held entirely through the online session and under the Sunshine Act and under the official emergency declaration that we declared. These type meetings held entirely virtual are permissible as long as the public is given an opportunity to comment, which I stated that you will have an opportunity to comment. And it's recommended that the recording, the meeting be recorded and posted for everyone to see, which is also happening. So to start, I'm going to identify some of the people here on the call. We do have the entire board, Rick Schiller, Harvey Greenwall, Spencer Claypool, Rebecca Elliott, and myself, Jim Marks. I'm the chairman of the Board of Supervisors here in North Coventry Township. We're also joined by our Township Manager, Kevin Hennessy, and our soon-to-be Township Manager, Erica Battor. She is also on this call, as well as our solicitor, Dan Seiger. So let's get started. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And in the packets were the minutes from the March 23 meeting. Do I have any comments or corrections on the meeting minutes from March 23? Hearing none. I am looking for a motion to approve the minutes of March 23. Okay.
Second.
I heard today here Spencer with the motion and Harvey with the second. All in favor? I should also note that the minutes of this meeting are also being taken by Kelly. She'll be taking minutes and those will be posted after approved at our next meeting. We have unpaid bills totaling $77,980. And since the last meeting, have a list of paid bills and payroll totaling $161,085. Do I have any comments or questions on the bills?
No.
Going to open it up. Any comments from the public on the bills? Again, comments can come in the chat box, which I am reviewing and also by unmuting and just speaking up. Any comments on the bills? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to pay the $77,980 and acknowledge $161,085 of payroll and paid items since the last meeting?
They moved.
Rebecca has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rick Schiller's seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. In your packet was also developer's bills. So have any comments on the developer's bills?
No.
Okay, hearing none. We do not have any subdivision in land development this evening. So we're going to move on to the motion. On the resolution. The continuation of the Pottstown Regional Parks Mini Grant Program. The regional grant wants to apply for a fourth round of DCNR grants that would be matched by Pottstown Health and Wellness. To date, we have received through three rounds, we've received 100, just over $112,000 in grants. And Kevin, I'm going to ask you to step in here and give a little bit of detail of this and what we need to do next.
Well, basically, on the three rounds of grants, originally it was anticipated that there would be $25,000 per grant for the eight municipalities. We received those grants and there were some municipalities who did not apply for the grants. So we followed up and applied for many grants after that. So that's why instead of 75,000, we have received 112,000 plus on that. What we need to do at this point is if the board wishes to continue this, we need to sign the resolution or have a motion to sign the resolution and forward it in with the grant application so that we can apply for the fourth round of $200,000 from this match from DCNR and through Pottstown Health and Wellness.
Okay. Do I have any questions from the board? Any questions from the public on this? Now Kevin, I had seen that there was two resolutions in the packet. One was Bill Sumis's name and one was my name. Are we approving signing both of those or what are we signing?
There are two. Agenda item three is for the DCNR grant for Pottstown Health and Wellness. And then the second, actually, agenda item five is a motion on the resolution and that's on the Miller property acquisition.
Okay.
So they're both DCNR grants, two different resolutions that need to be signed and forwarded in. One has you as the signator, the other is Bill, since Bill is the chairman of the Regional Planning Commission.
Right. So do we make the recommendation that he signs on behalf of the Regional Planning Commission?
We do.
Okay. And do you want me to send him to that because it says electronic signatures are appropriate? Do you want me to email him that to sign?
He doesn't need to sign for this. He would sign for the other. This resolution will be signed by me as the Secretary of the Board and I will forward it tomorrow morning to the Regional Planning for the submission with the grant application.
Okay. Okay. So we're looking for a motion to sign the resolution to apply for the fourth round grant.
I'll make the motion, Jim.
Spencer has made the motion. Do I have a second? Harvey has seconded. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is a discussion on extending the discount period for property taxes. As you may have read in the newspaper and around the area, there's municipalities and counties are addressing extending the discount period for property taxes. That discount period normally ends April 30th, but because of the virus, there's been a discussion about extending that to a date beyond that. A date that we can determine what we want to, you know, make that. I think Kevin had suggested maybe the 31st of May, but maybe we do June 1st and it's up to the board to decide what that is. Just to be clear, the discount period is for property taxes paid. Most property taxes are paid by the person's mortgage company. Those will not be affected and probably most of those will have been paid already. I know mine was paid April 1st or March 30th. So any property owner that has a mortgage on the property, those taxes have been escrowed over the past year and most likely have been paid as of today. This would be for the people who have no mortgage on their, on their property. And that we'd be extending that discount period a month or two in, because of the pandemic we find ourselves in. So what's the pleasure of the board? Do we have a date? Does anybody have a date that thinks is appropriate or what do you think?
Well, I'm satisfied with the 31st of May. I would say, why don't we try to try it for months and see how it works out? Whether or not we receive any complaints that it should be extended beyond that.
I think that's a good suggestion. I agree.
I'll agree with that.
Okay, Rick, you're good?
I support it.
Okay. Do I have any comments from the public? Any questions? Okay.
I'll make that motion then.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Jim, if I may.
Yes.
I would like to make a comment of a letter I received and I'm sure all of the residents received this week in the mail from the North Coventry Municipal Authority.
Wait, wait. Rebecca, why don't you wait to put that on checklist?
Very good. Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay. Okay. So we're going to move on to the next, which is adopt a resolution to apply for the DCNR grant for the purchase of the Miller Open Space. And I see that we have our Open Space Chairman on here. Chris, can you speak to this and kind of give us a little bit of the history on this parcel and the importance that it has?
We have an signed agreement with the Millers to acquire two parcels on the north side of Chestnut Hill Road that would provide a connection between the main part of Coventry Woods Park and the 32 acres that's closer to the French Creek Development. But right now, people have to walk down the steep part of Chestnut Hill Road, Coventry Hill Road, to access the trail going through the 32 acres and then down to Cherry Hill Lane. This would provide a unique opportunity to provide a trail that would avoid the pedestrians actually walking on the road with no sidewalks. And it expands our preserve to over 700 acres. We have applied already to Chester County and this is a grant to DCNR to cover almost all of the cost of the acquisition. This was actually approved earlier but by the board, but this is the actual resolution that has to go in with the grant application.
Okay. Do I have any questions from the board? Comments or questions?
I think it's a good plan.
Any comments or questions from the public? Everybody? Okay, hearing none and seeing none in the chat box. Looking for a motion to adopt a resolution. I'm sorry, a motion to sign and adopt a resolution for the Miller Open Space.
Same.
Rebecca has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Harvey has seconded. Quick question, Kevin, on this. Now this one I sign, correct?
No, you will sign the contracts and stuff when it comes in.
Okay.
But I will, I will sign this resolution as the Secretary of the Board and forward it in tomorrow so that both these resolutions can be attached to the grant applications.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Good work from the Open Space Review Board and certainly under your leadership. Well done. Moving on to administration, Department Heads Reports were sent out last week. Did anybody have any comments or questions on them?
Well, I know it's on the police report that the overtime was reduced by half last month.
Also looked like calls had been reduced down to. No doubt an impact of what's going on around us.
I think Matt's online. He can probably comment on it.
Yeah. Matt, any comments on activity and what's been going on with the police department?
Sure. No, no, you're exactly right. The service calls have gone down as well as the overtime for the month, just because of how we're handling operations here at the department, you know, just more of a, just responding to the calls that come out, being out in the public visibly, but not exposing our officers to any, any more of a exposure threat than, than we have to as far as the virus itself. So we've been fortunate that, you know, since the first two weeks or so that we've been dealing with it, that we haven't had any other officers tested for the, for the virus, which is a good thing. I think we're doing what the Chester County Health Department has recommended for us to do as far as keeping our officers safe and having the, the right equipment for them to wear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Any, any other comments on Department Head Reports? John House, everything going with the three guys working each week? John McKee?
It's going well. I mean, a little rough on Friday when we had some trees down and responding with three guys, but we handled it. So it's so far, so good. We're anxious to get back to business as usual.
Okay, great. Thank you. Action, I didn't list anything on the action list? And checklist, Kevin?
The only thing I have to report is that we sent out the mutual aid agreement to the eight municipalities, including ourselves, that are on the Pottstown Metropolitan Regional Group. I sent it to the borough manager and the township managers. They've had, they've sent it out. What we did do was we took what was drafted by the Chester County District Attorney's Office, modified it to include both Montgomery County and Chester County, sent it on to Dan. Dan reviewed it, made a few changes, and then we sent it out to everybody for review. I've had some, some copy or some comments back, some concerns as far as what would happen with extradition, et cetera. I explained that my understanding and my feeling about the backup and the coverage would be to assist existing officers with those, in those departments. We wouldn't necessarily be the arresting officer if we were over in Montgomery County. Same thing if Montgomery County came over to help us, they would be assisting, acting as backup. And I'm certainly hopeful that all the local departments will have healthy officers to be out there and that this is being suggested in the event that there is some department that's hit very hard, that we would be able to give aid to that individual department. So we're waiting for some feedback from the other municipalities and we'll discuss this probably at the next township meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it for my checklist. It's been, been kind of slow.
Yeah. And lonely, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Rebecca?
Yeah, I just wanted to distinguish between our extension of the due date for the taxes. In contrast with the municipal, municipal authority, they're going, the current paying period is 45 days to pay without penalty, but the North Coventry Municipal Authority and the North Coventry Water Authority approved a reduction in the paying periods of 25 days. So now all must, all bills must be paid by the 10th of the following month to avoid penalty charges. And this will be effective with the bills you receive on or around July 15th, 2020. And I just did, I wanted to distinguish that cost from our local tax charge. That's all.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you for that. Rick, anything?
No, nothing from me.
Okay, Harv, anything?
Nothing.
Spencer?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, I just have a couple of things and then I'll kick to Dan. The declaration, the emergency declaration does continue. As you remember, at our last meeting, we did not put an end date. We just coincided it with the state's declaration. So that is going to stay in place until further notice. The Coventry Woods has officially been postponed for May 17th. The committee is looking at dates for the fall and hopefully, hope to be able to schedule something. You know, once we get past this and can find a fall date that'll work, there'll be more info as we go through the summer on that. And lastly, on my checklist, joining us tonight is Erica Battor, our soon-to-be new Township Manager. She starts in one week's time. As of Monday, she's officially starting. So Erica, we welcome you. It's just a crazy time and don't envy the, the transition for you and Kevin. We know that you guys are going to work hard to, to figure it out.
Thank you very much. I hope everybody had a good Easter. Kevin and I are working on a plan and we'll adapt through it. That's what we've been doing in our, right now. And so coming into this, we'll work together and I'll work with all of you. We'll take it day by day.
That sounds good. We look forward, we look forward to being in the same room and working together at some point.
I know. But I'm looking for it as well.
Kevin, did you get Erica everything, paperwork that she needs?
No, not yet. We're, Kelly is going to be checking on that tomorrow.
Okay.
Once we have, make sure that we have all the paperwork that she needs, we'll get it to her and she can fill that out and send it. I'll talk to you tomorrow, Erica, about that. We'll probably scan it and send it to you so that you don't even have to come in this week.
All right.
What about getting Erica an email address? Who's, who's handling that?
I will contact Links and we'll get her up and running as of next Monday.
Okay, all right. All right, sounds good. And Dan, anything on your checklist?
I, yes, I had a argument with the Commonwealth Court on Tripodi on the second. The good news about the virus is I didn't have to go to Harrisburg. I could do it by telephone conference call. So we already got the order and the order denied this day by Tripodi to proceed in executing on the contempt. So hopefully shortly, the courts will proceed in allowing the master to start collecting. That's all I have.
Anything else? Okay. All right, this is a public comment portion of the meeting. Again, I'm going to ask that you can speak up, unmute yourself or type a question or comment in the chat box. If you're going to do so, we do ask, we do ask that you identify yourself as well as the street you live on in the township. So I'm going to open it up now. Any takers?
I'll go. Hi, I'm Haley Brady. I live on, hi, hi Jim. I live on Marcus Drive in Wendler or Cross Street. So my question is, is there any money allocated for street cleaning this season?
There has not been. There has not been any money on that. We've actually cut back as far as paving. We were going to pave the driveway out of Fernbrook and we cut back on that because of, with this COVID-19 and everybody not working, we're concerned what it will do to our earned income tax, which is the largest tax that we get. So it's certainly going to affect our budget and it was not budgeted for in this year.
Well, even though there was no, we didn't have any snow plowing practically this season. You can't.
Well, here's Haley, here's, here's the issue, okay? About half the township lost their jobs in the past few weeks. Our, our income yearly on earned income tax is 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars, okay? Our real estate transfer tax is $160,000. We don't, and we planned our budget based on last year's numbers. We don't know where that number is going to come in now this year. It's not going to be anywhere near the budgeted amount that we had. So out of our $5 million budget, 3.2 or 3.3 million dollars comes in off of, of real estate and earned income taxes. We have no idea what portion of that money we're going to get at this point. The last meeting, I made a point and Kevin and I have had this and I had this conversation with Rick, that we need to be really, really, really careful about our spending in the next few months because we just don't know what we're looking at. You know, we are budgeted, the improved budget at the end of this year was, was, I think, being made up or very close to, to even a break even. So any deficit in the expectations of those numbers is going to put us in a, in, in the hole. So we got to be really careful. We're going to be, you know, watching every penny in every quarter and we just have to be very, you know, diligent about how we spend money this year. Fortunately, you're right. I don't know that we used any salt and I know we didn't cut it this year with the gravel that we've done in the past to make it last longer. So those pebbles and stuff that in the years past were, would lay in the street until John was able to, to rent the equipment needed to, to clean it up.
Now they're all around the sewer grates. It's still a mess out there. Can the water and sewer guys do anything about that?
Water and sewer are separate authorities. They don't fall under the Township road crew. So no, unfortunately, no. I ask, this is the position that this virus has put us in. So we need to be very careful about where we're spending money and where that money's going. Certainly, you know, we'll address high priority issues that, that come before us, but just quite honestly, that is not the highest priority that we have right now. Okay. Anybody else? Public comment?
Can you hear me? This is Dan Doyle.
Hey, Dan, how are you?
Fine, how are you?
Good, thanks.
I wanted to ask, oh, you've made a, an amendment to the date for the township taxes for the discount period till May 31st. What about the per capita tax bill roughly do at the same time? And typically, most people, if they're going to go to Fulton Bank, they go there at the same time. Is that still not being changed or is that going to be moved to for the discount period?
There hasn't been any discussion about extending that discount period because the per capita tax is $10, so the discount rate is $9.80. So, you know, I didn't know that, I don't know that it's a 20 cents is.
I know it's not a big deal.
I think, if I might speak to that, Jim, the, the suggested resolution that was provided by Montgomery County. suggested resolution that was provided by Montgomery County spoke only to the real estate taxes, did not do the per capita. But generally, the per capita and real estate follow through the same. We have to notify Fulton Bank of our decision. Fulton Bank, if the check comes in for $9.80, will accept it for the per capita, same way as the discount period on the real estate taxes. So they will do it that way. And we also have to notify Municipe. We've already been in touch with them. They can change it so that when someone's putting in their bill number, which they need to do on Municipe, either the bill number or their parcel number, that they put that in and it will, Municipe will accept the discounted amount through May for both of them. So even though we're talking 20 cents, we're going to make sure that the the bank and Municipe and Nancy, Nancy's on online here with us, our tax collector, our tax collector, our elected tax collector. She will accept those and and move through processing the the payments.
Are you good?
Okay, thank you. Another question for you, Jim. I know we're trying to not do any expenditures that we don't have to, but are we doing anything with patching holes in any of the roads? Right now, I mean, you know.
Right now, we cannot. I will address that. John, I don't think is on, but the asphalt plants are closed. That is part of the construction shutdown by the governor. We cannot get the material to patch the roads. We have some cold patch and stuff that we have used. But it's doesn't do the same as the hot asphalt. And we can't even do the roadwork that we need to do on the roads that we bid out to to do the oil and chip on because John can't do the base repair, can't get the material to to do the base repair. That's one of the reasons why we've cut the crews down to three man crew each every other week, rather than have all six workers in working doing that.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Jim. That's it.
Thanks, Dan. Anybody else?
Hi, Mr. Marks. It's Sharon Lossig.
Sharon.
Hi.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Any update on 1778 St. Peter's Road? We haven't seen him, so.
I can, I can say I have not heard anything from Mr. Coroner. I have, Ron has not been in the office. Our Ron Comtoes, our assistant codes officer, I don't think he, if he had heard, I'm sure he would have reached out to me via phone, but yeah, nothing new at this point.
Okay, thank you.
What's his situation? What's happening with the grass? Has it started growing or?
It's starting.
Starting.
I will follow up this week with Chuck Warner to make sure that he has somebody lined up to to do the mowing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sharon.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Jim, I just want to ask one more question.
Sure.
The path, the new walking path where the trucks are located.
Yeah.
I just want to verify, that's for walkers only, correct? There's no bikes allowed there, right?
Do we have anybody Parks and Rec on here? I think we do. Anybody from Parks and Rec want to address that?
Holly, I can say that it was discussed at the last Parks and Rec meeting when you called and raised the issue. We posed it to Parks and Rec and they had discussion, although it was not determined one way or the other, to my knowledge.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't make a decision at all. We came to the conclusion, we wanted to have more discussion on it and more information about what kind of issues and problems there are.
Let me just say, the path is not wide enough for bikes, especially if you're walking beside somebody. That is, that is an accident waiting to happen. Especially if they're coming from, I mean, there's no one way or other way that you should walk. So therefore, they could be coming behind you. A lot of times people don't say passing on your on your left, passing on your right as you as you should. I think it would be a real liability, guys, if you don't prohibit bikes there.
Yeah, we had the discussion about, you know, the age of the the riders, the speed, the number of signs that may be needed, required. And one of the things we didn't want to do is make it such a a park with so many signs on it that that's all you saw were do not this, or you can do this, whatever. So, yeah, it's in discussion and we didn't have any prior knowledge to it. So we have the months to come up with solutions and ideas.
Yeah, Haley, the next meeting is May 6th. It's a Wednesday night. It's Parks and Rec. Most likely it'll be a virtual meeting again. So you know, hopefully you can attend it either virtually or in person and kind of express what you're saying here. It might be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
To tag on to that comment about the bikes, I think that park would be a great location to take little kids and teach them how to ride a bike, especially with you know, not a lot of sidewalks and a lot of areas in the township. So I can't imagine why adults would wouldn't be using those trails all that often, but it seems like a perfect place for kids, in my opinion.
Yeah, that was part of the discussion, like John had said, at Parks and Rec. So you know, I'm sure that will continue as that park gets used. It does seem to be getting a fair amount of use, especially now, I guess, with with everybody stuck in home. So we'll see if this is a just a a problem specific to to the pandemic or something that's going forward that that'll have to be addressed, but it'll be Parks and Rec who makes the recommendation to the board. And then the board will act on that recommendation. So we'll let Parks and Rec and nine volunteers there do their do their job and come back to us with a recommendation.
Jim, if I may, I did hear from one other individual who said that they were on the trail with their with their dog, walking their dog, and three teenagers came flying by on their bicycles. So it certainly, I think with the kids, kids going going down the hill, you know, want to go as fast as they can. I don't know whether they're the utmost concern about the walkers. They they want to get the thrill out of it. So it's something certainly for the Parks and Rec to discuss and decide on.
Yep. Okay. Last chance for public comment. 27 people here on the call tonight. Certainly appreciate everybody taking time out of their schedule to 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 be here. Again, hopefully it won't be too long before we're all back in the same room taking care of the business that we're been elected to to handle. So I guess that would be it. And at this time, I'm going to end the meeting. Next meeting's two weeks from tonight. We'll see you then. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.
Good night, everyone.